States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unto God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the January 6, 2020 Board of Selectmen's meeting. On the agenda this evening, we have a live entertainment permit request, a change of manager request, a billiard pool table permit request, department reports from the fire department, town administrator, we have several action items, including a few resignations and acceptance of gifts, we have old business, new business, correspondence, approval of minutes, citizens forum, and then adjournment. Okay, so first we have a live entertainment permit for Sawdust Cafe House and Dessert by Peter Champagne.
Hello.
Hello, we do have your application and we did have questions about the times.
Yeah, so the live entertainment is just on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Friday nights it's from eight o'clock till 11:30 and Sundays it's 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Okay, but that's not what's on the application.
It has the hours listed there, too. So the hours of operation are 6:30 Monday through Thursday till 5:00 p.m. On Friday it's 6:30 to midnight, Saturday seven to midnight, and Sundays eight to three.
Right, but I think it'd be better if you just put the hours for the live entertainment.
Okay, I was told to do everything. I thought they had the hours on there for that, too.
No, because it looks like 6:30 in the morning, you might start an entertainment.
No, I couldn't even get anyone to play that early and I wouldn't want to hear anyone.
Right, right, but you do open that early for coffee.
Yes, yeah, we have breakfast and lunch, yeah.
Yeah, that's no, so that was the question we had, so I think if we fix that up, does the board have any other question? Okay, do we have a motion then on, okay, for?
Oh, live entertainment permit hours have been stated.
No, well, yes, could you state those hours again?
Yep, so Friday and Saturdays from 8:00 p.m. to 11:30 p.m.
To 11:30.
And then Sunday is from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Okay, what about Monday to Thursday?
Nothing. We close at five.
Okay, so, okay, so we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, you're all set on that, how's it coming?
It's coming. No, it's close, I'm hoping for the 24th, so it's just depending on a couple of little things, but it's by the end of this weekend, most of the finished work is done and then it's the decor and then it's really on, equipment comes in Friday, board health go-kays everything and then bringing the food and just it's really like depending on staff training and all that, so.
Yeah, you've been working hard, the light's been on.
Three months now, 80 hours a week, it's getting to me.
Well, I hope it turns out well.
Yeah, it's pretty cool, I think everybody will enjoy it.
Yeah.
All right, good, thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a change of manager for Ocean State.
Hello.
Good evening, could you give your name for the record, please?
Michael A. Rodriguez.
Okay, and this is just a simple change of management from Larry Hitchcock to you?
Yes.
Okay, the paperwork was in order, but we usually like to see the applicant come in. Does the board have any questions?
Have you ever managed a store that sold alcoholic beverages?
No, this'll be the first time in my retail career that I'll be overseeing that type of sales.
Okay, anything else? Okay, anyone wishing to make a motion?
For moving, please, the change of manager of the state.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Why I take notes, because I can never read math words. Yeah, I know. Okay, then we have a request for a billiard pool table permit, Old Sturbridge Pizza.
Hi, how are you?
Okay, could you state your name, please, for the record?
Findersing.
Okay, and you were in for your liquor license and we approved it.
Yes.
We had noticed on the application you drew a.
Fill out the application for the pool.
Yes, and we do have, have it filled out and it's one table?
Yes, it's one.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Yes.
Someone willing to?
May I ask you to approve the billiard pool table permit for Old Sturbridge?
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
It's a license, yeah?
It's good, the hours say 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.
What? 11:00 a.m. to 1:00?
Yeah. That's what it says on the license. Oh, well.
Well, for the pool.
Yeah, for the pool table, I just.
Should probably come back, he put it on the, "Are you on there?"
Well, he has, you questioning them, "A.m.?"
Hours?
No, I don't question it, 1:00 p.m. is like one in the afternoon, it's like, people will probably start showing up a little bit later than that to play pool.
Oh, I didn't even notice that.
See if I can catch it.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. That's funny.
If you can't catch him, you can always submit it later.
That looks like just noon time.
Yeah, it's like, it's like happy hour.
No happy hours in Massachusetts.
Yeah, it's like, well.
Depends.
Yeah, it depends, it's like.
There's mimosas and 11:00 a.m.
Oh, my kind of happy hour is 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m.
Mine's whenever I determine. How I keep losing my hand.
Why can't we just have happy hour where people just can be happy?
Oh, that's.
To do with anything, just being happy.
It's asking too much.
We can do it. I don't know.
We weren't quick enough, but we did notice that the hours you have are 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.
1:00 a.m.
Okay. Mike caught it.
Amend the approval?
Yes.
Motion amended to.
Okay, now you're all set.
Second. All set, thank you.
Okay, all in favor of the amended motion?
All in.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mike is sharp in 2020.
Ah, yeah.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have department reports, Fire Chief Garso.
Hello, evening, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy.
Happy. I realized the year-end report was quite daunting, so I was playing with our program a little bit and was able to break it down and streamline it a little bit to show the year-end numbers. You'll see that we finished the year with 1,975 calls. Of those, 1,311 were EMS-related and 664 were fire-related. The 1,975 is a slight decrease from last year and we attribute that to our mutual aid communities have increased their staffing over the last year, so they're requesting us less. But I will note that the nature's, nature of the calls that were going on seemed to be more and more difficult and require more and more time and manpower.
Okay, questions from the board? Chief, I did have a question, going through the inspections, I noticed that John Marinelli seems to do them all at one time. Would, I don't know whether it was an exact directive or not, but have other people also doing them?
Yeah, Lieutenant Marinelli is the designated fire inspector. I also have Lieutenant Rodrick, Lieutenant Rendow, and a couple of the firefighters going out doing the inspections. They may not show up on the reports because.
Well, I did see Rodrick and Rendow's name, but.
So we're trying to, we're trying to spread the wealth.
Yeah, Priscilla, you remember that, don't you?
I do remember, and I think it was like a mandate at the time, you're right when you say that, yeah.
It actually benefits us from a department when the, when the other lieutenants take their crews out to do these inspections, it gives the crews the opportunity to look at the building that they may not otherwise go into, so it's really a benefit, it's a training tool that we're using, and that was really why I did it, I didn't realize there was a mandate from the board.
Yeah, because the board at that time didn't feel that one person should be doing them all and using all their work time or most of their work time doing that, whereas on calls and things that would entail overtime and.
Sure.
Right, that, so, so worth looking into here.
Mary, Chief, I apologize if it's here, but how many times have we sought aid?
Uh, it is actually on the first page of the black and white copy you have there under mutual aid, we provided aid 195 times in the calendar year, 2019.
Oh, aid received, got it.
And received it 61 times.
61, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
Anything else from the board?
Has that been about the same since we've, I know over the years we've tried to increase our staffing and.
It goes up and down just a little bit, the, as I said earlier, the aid that we gave this year was a little bit lower than it has been because the mutual aid communities increased their staffing. Our aid received probably is down because we have more staffing, because we have the third ambulance in service, so.
That was my question, that 61 is down from previous year.
I can pull the numbers, but.
I was just curious.
I would say yes.
Because we've made an effort to staff, so I would be interested in that number, no rush, though.
Okay, sure.
Okay, anything else? Chase?
I just have a comment regarding this report, and I just wanted to tell you how awesome before Christmas your event was for this town. I, you know, all our departments are great with community outreach, but I feel like that event went above and beyond, and I was lucky enough to see it with my kids, and I was at a party that night where other young couples were just raving about it, and I just want to tell you that it was all involved, please tell them that it was awesome.
I will, I did include some of the comments that we had on our social media page, and, you know, full disclosure, there was one resident who felt that it was a waste of taxpayers' money, so I will say that is.
That's no, no surprise.
That always happens.
But I will, that first page in your packet kind of gives a shout-out to everybody that helped, including the retired firefighter Brian Towns, some of the local businesses here, and our Mr. and Mrs. Claus. This came from the firefighters, they asked me if, apparently this is something that had been done in years past, it was a longstanding tradition, and they asked if we could revitalize it, and I think it was, as you said, a huge success, we're looking forward to doing it next year, so.
Great.
That's awesome.
It's good that you did it all over, too, all the different locations and stuff was great.
Yeah, that took a little bit of coordinating, and again, the firefighters did all that, you know, amongst themselves, and I think they did a good job. I know there was a couple of streets they did not get down, and, you know, hopefully we'll, we'll be able to do it next year, they're going to tweak it a little bit next year.
It's hard, I mean, everything's.
It's a long day.
Yeah.
It's a long day, and the sleigh, I will say, also was built by the firefighters in the fighter farm, the materials that were donated to us, so they did a good job with that.
Okay, anything else from the board? Anything else from you?
The only other thing I have in the packet is the award letters from the Department of Fire Services for the two grants we received in December, I think I mentioned those the last time I was here. That was, those are the official award letters.
Okay, so now you're back on schedule. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Yes, you too.
These pictures are like, it could be on the Hallmark Channel for Christmas.
Yeah, some of them were pretty good, yeah.
Yeah.
Christmas in Sturbridge. I know. You know what, while she says that, I think, does the town have, well, on the town website, wouldn't be bad to have a couple of those pictures either.
That's a good idea.
You know?
I can get them, I can get them to whoever.
I just think it's a great thing for the community, when she said, you know, Hallmark Channel made me think of the website, the town website.
You also have to be careful putting kids' pictures up.
Maybe not the kids, but Mr. and Mrs. Claus.
Claus and the sleigh and the fire truck.
Without identifying anybody, yeah.
There's always that.
Yeah, unless they sign for it.
Right, okay, town administrator.
Thank you. On the dais this evening are the revised warrants based upon last week's meeting, we've updated a couple of the numbers, and behind them are some answers to questions you all had, and we'll go over those when we get to that point in the agenda. Also on the dais is a memorandum on the Board of Selectmen's 2019 goals, so you can read that at your leisure.
Yes, can I interrupt for one minute?
Sure.
After we read that, probably next meeting, be prepared to make a motion on merit pay on that. Okay.
Or ask questions, or whatever you want to do. As you, as I texted out to you all, there was a water leak at the senior center, pretty severe, the basement was flooded, most of the flooring has to be removed and replaced along with some work in the stairwell, which was where the steam valve went, cut loose, so we'll be closing the senior center the week around Martin Luther King for repairs. The meals program, we'll find an alternative site, but this is the second time this has happened, they've got to cut out two feet of sheet rock in the walls plus the flooring, and Robin was good enough, she found another steam valve that was leaking before it blew, so they replaced that as well, so.
Excuse me, ma'am, she's.
Priscilla?
This is like the second time, and the last one was, was affected, the elevator, where they couldn't use the elevator, now, you said it's closed for a week?
It will be, it's open now.
Okay, so during that week, because I know you're doing the meals and stuff, but the outreach for, in other words, I want to, I want the elderly who need the outreach to have an ability to call someone, so can that information be given to them so that they don't feel isolated for the week?
Sure.
For a lot of them, their needs, even if it's a question, they go there and they can get their information, so somehow that we make it available to them that even if it's somebody at the library for a couple of hours a day, I don't know what the plan is, but, so the elderly can get what they need, is my point.
Of course, yeah, and we will, we'll make those arrangements.
Okay, thanks.
Also, we received word today from Senator Goby's office that we have received a community compact grant for $194,000. This is going to be used to create a fiber optic network between the town buildings and the school buildings, so, that's something Jeremy Jalbert, our IT director, put in for, so that's going to increase our capacities between the buildings.
Can you explain a little more, what kind of capacity for?
Well, you just get better data rates, it's easier to do backups and consolidate your ITs, IT systems into one building, because now you have a fiber optic connection that has almost unlimited speeds.
Okay, so it's like an efficiency thing?
Oh, yeah, big time. And it's going to be owned by, the fiber will be owned by the town, so we're not leasing fiber from Verizon or AT&amp;T or anybody else. And that's all I had.
Okay, next we have some action items, the first one is what we normally do, Martin Luther King Junior Day is on a Monday, 20th, so we'll move our meeting till Tuesday, the 21st.
I can't be here, I've got a work commitment.
Okay, Priscilla, you else?
Well, school starts the next day, so I'm okay.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll see what's on the agenda, Mike, and just likewise.
That will be marijuana.
Oh, well, can, Mike, can, can Mike make it Wednesday?
Yeah.
Should we go to Wednesday, so if it's marijuana, I would think he'd want to be here, I'm not sure, I'm not speaking for him, I'm just.
I would, I would.
Can we go to Wednesday? If, I don't know how others are available, that's the other thing.
Why do I have, oh, is that the housing meeting, that same day? I wrote in housing for something.
I don't have that calendar.
Not sure if it was something the planning board was.
So that is the 22nd.
22nd.
It's Housing Partnership at 5:30.
So we meet at 6:30, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Do 6:30?
Yeah, our regular meeting is 6:30, would that work?
Yeah.
For housing?
Because they're.
I mean, I don't know how it fits for others, I'm just offering it.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 that's fine, but I was just wondering which the housing was, but if they're just going to go over their survey results and everything, that should give them plenty of time.
I don't know, Chase.
Would they be doing that in this room or in the room they normally work, meet in?
I don't know where they have it scheduled, to tell you the truth.
It's in the Julian Conference Room.
Yeah, so.
Up here, will be in that room.
Yeah, so.
Even if they go over, there's no conflict.
Yeah, so the 22nd, 6:30.
Thank you.
Should be fine. Okay, next we have a resignation from the Sturbridge Police Department, part-time dispatcher, Alexis St. Francis. Okay, should have that letter?
Should be in there.
No, I know I have it, there it is.
There it is.
Yeah, she says, "Chief, I am writing this letter to you in regards to resigning from my part-time dispatching position. I am resigning from any and all positions I hold at this agency effective immediately. If there are any further questions regarding anything I mentioned in this letter, I'm happy to answer them." Okay, so if anybody on the board has questions, you can ask the chief. Okay, is there a motion then to accept the resignation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have a question.
Mary?
Are we still doing, I know at one time we wanted to do exit interviews where people left, not into.
We haven't gotten to that point yet.
Dispatcher, but, okay. We talked about wanting to know why people leave.
She's going to the National Guard.
Yeah, no, that's different, but it just prompted my.
Yeah, general.
Remember, my recall, I'm leaving.
Okay, all in favor of the motion? Okay.
Did you need to vote on A? Does it need to be?
No, we don't usually vote, we just, as a matter of fact, it's something we just do automatically, although we need a reminder.
It's 6:30, all right?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, 22nd.
Okay, next we need to accept a total of $200 in gift cards from Studio 2020 for the senior center. Okay, anyone have a question on that?
What did they, what is, I'm sorry, what is Studio 2020?
It's the new optic place next to the Thai place.
Okay, that's what I thought.
2020 Vision.
Okay, so that's not, so are they going to give it to seniors to go get tested?
They already, I mean, they did.
They did.
For some, the holiday party and so.
Oh, okay, nice.
Yeah, so we really need to vote to accept it, though. Mike?
I'd like to make a motion to accept it, to ask that a letter be sent, thank you, I mean, it's nice that a very new business in town is getting engaged in the community, and that's, I really appreciate that.
Okay, so we'll get that letter out.
I don't think we voted.
Oh.
Did we?
I made the motion, nobody seconded.
Do we need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, next is request for approval of contract with FMN Generator, Inc. for maintenance of the standby generator at the public safety complex. Any questions?
This is the firm that's currently servicing the generator, we just got an extended service contract which costs less per year than a one-year time.
The only question I had is the cover says that there's, the cost of the base contracts, $1,250, and then elsewhere it says there's, in the budget, there's $1,000, so is there a way that the town accountant can certify that there's an appropriation for this purpose?
The $1,250 is over the next two and a half years.
Oh.
That's the total, for the next two and a half years.
Oh, it's a multi-year contract, okay, so we currently have.
Enough.
Sufficient funds to.
And it will be over the next couple of years to cover.
Yeah, December 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2022.
Okay, did we vote?
No.
Oh.
This is bad.
Make a motion to.
He is not coming up to it.
Your motion, Mike?
Motion to approve the contract with FM, for the generator contract.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay. It's a request to authorize a fund to be created on behalf of Cecilia Schweitzer for funds to benefit the Sturbridge Senior Center. Okay, she, her family had requested this, the fire department.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, okay, motion to, well, is a request to accept Walmart Community Grant in the amount of $1,500 for the Sturbridge Fire Department.
Motion to approve?
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, then we have a review of the special town meeting.
Did you want to jump to old business before you do that?
Well, I was going to suggest that because under old business, we have the water bill appealed for 50, Fox River Road. I was going to ask the board if we could postpone this, I would like to have another conversation with our DPW director on this $9,000, $9,000 gallon per day flow where nobody could find where the water went, I mean, it certainly would have impacted severely the septic tank, it wasn't in the yard, it wasn't, other times we have found a leak or water outside running, in this case we haven't, and which is willing to relook at it. So I was just wondering if the board would be amenable to that.
I would be.
Because it really is an exceptional difference, we know the meet is. We know the meter's running fine. They took it out, it was running fine when they took it out, and it was running fine previous. But to get 9,000 gallons flow a day.
And time isn't of the essence? I mean, we may as well let Butch look into it again if he wants to.
He's willing to. So how's the board feel?
I went through past minutes of 13, 16, 17, 18, and 19. And there was one in 13 where the meter reading differed from what the bill came, and it was a long issue with someone. And it was recommended by the town administrator to at least abate 50% because the meter readings weren't right. And the board, uh, wasn't totally in favor of it. It, it ended up, um, ultimately happening because the meter was faulty. But in the beg, but this meter has been proven not to be faulty. So somewhere that, a meter's not gonna fix itself. So that water went somewhere.
Right.
And my...
It could've, could it be, uh, I don't know what it could be, but it went somewhere.
Yeah, but in those cases where there've been leaks, it's been obvious that there's leaks either in the house or outside someplace, and there was no water found. So you would assume with having a septic tank that that's where it went. Now, if you've got a thousand dollar, a thousand gallon septic tank, and you're running water 9,000 gallons a day, I mean, there would be some effect.
If that, yeah, but could it be run somewhere else? Could it be watering yards? Could it be anything?
Well, nobody saw.
Yeah, but nobody saw, but that doesn't, I, I don't mean this in any disrespect to anybody. But we've had these issues before, and I, I mean, I don't know what you do with this. I mean, because I, I think we're setting a precedent, and that's where I, I'm very afraid to do.
Yeah, the board doesn't set precedent, really. We look at case by case. I know at one time, years ago, there was an abatement given that was, um, under the same circumstances. Similar, not quite the same. The person did have sewer. But this case is really strange, and Butch said he's willing to take a look at it. So, you know, I figure two weeks isn't gonna make a...
Oh, it doesn't, I mean, I don't care if it takes the two weeks, but I just think that, you know, I, I'm ready to vote on this anyways. So it doesn't, two weeks isn't gonna really change my mind unless Butch comes back with something definitive.
Yeah, well, that's it.
You know, there's a reason.
Right. I mean, because it is, when you look at it, it's just astounding. I have a printout, I should give it to you, of the flows per day for that period. It's, you know...
Yeah, well, you've got it here in the packet.
But how did it stop? See, my question is, how did it stop?
It stopped. It started, oh, well, that's it.
Then, how did it start? How did it stop? And the meter is working?
That's right.
Cause the meter came back, okay, so...
Somebody stopped it somehow.
Something stopped, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, but I, I would personally just like to make a motion that we give Butch time to delve into it a little bit more.
And it, it's too much flow for a normal toilet leak.
Well, yeah.
It's, it's like a ho, garden hose being wide open.
Or have holes in it.
Yeah, or, you know, something, something.
9,000 gallons a day is a lot.
And we know, but the town policy, since I've been here, has been, unless it's caused by the town, the, uh, the homeowner has to pay.
Yes, that's exactly right.
No, I know that's the policy, but this is just, we haven't voted. I'm just asking for a, uh, two week.
I...
And I, I made a motion to that effect.
I don't think ti, time is critical. We can, uh, investigate more.
Yeah, so is someone willing?
I'll second it.
Okay.
I just wanna say that if this is the case, then I'm gonna ask that every abatement that has questionable water flow has the same courtesy.
Oh, well, they do. If people explain, now, I know there was one, this, was it this past summer? And the people readily admitted that it was the hose that was running outside.
Right, that's what I'm saying. The water went somewhere.
Well, that's right.
It went somewhere.
That's right.
And then if the meter, if at least, I would feel very comfortable if he came back and said, well, the meter, sometimes it works and, and it's acting up. Then there's no question.
Yeah.
It's a meter issue. But that's not what happened. So somewhere, that water went somewhere.
Yeah, but it's, it's just astronomically huge amount. And if it went to the septic system, there would've been an effect on a thousand gallon septic system.
Correctly, it could've gone elsewhere, too. I mean, I don't know.
Well, yeah, but, I mean, I think people would've noticed. Neighbors.
Not everybody sits watching the neighbor.
Well, I, I made a motion, Mary seconded it. All in favor of giving Butch time to delve more? Okay, five to nothing. No, I agree with you, Priscilla. And we've...
Yeah, we...
We stick to the, um, policy.
So, yeah.
But this is...
And he's gonna look to see, to see what, where the, is he gonna look from the street side? Even that's not gonna resolve it.
I'm, I'm not sure what he's going to, but he's willing to delve into it because he even thinks 9,000 is a bit high. So, okay.
I think we all think that, but we have to be consistent.
Oh, yeah.
We've held others.
I mean, one thing about sewer charges, they have to be equitable.
Oh, yeah. Fair and equitable.
But someone's gonna pay for this, one way or the other. And, um, so we'll do this on the 23rd? The next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
22nd? No.
Oh, 22nd?
Oh, yeah, no, I think Barbara will have all the information and we'll be voting, and then we'll let you know how it goes. Yeah, I'm sure, yes. Okay? Okay, now, the fun, review of the special town meeting warrants. Okay, if I can find it. Now, there were a few that we put on hold.
Yes, and they're identified which ones were put on hold. And, uh, some of the reasons for the hold, we've resolved. So if you wanna...
Okay, the first one was...
Article 44, that was voted on and done.
Yeah.
Article 45, you voted on, and there were no particular questions on that. Article 46, there was a hold, waiting for the cost. We've inserted $15,000 into Article 46 for the design of the parking lot. That was, uh, the lowest, uh, response we got from engineer was 13. So we added 13 plus a $2,000 contingency, $15,000 for the design. I know we talked about a grant, we'll look for grants as we go along. So if you wanna...
Okay.
That was number 46.
Well, I thought we voted to place.
It said hold, waiting for a cost.
Yeah, I thought we voted to place, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we voted to place. We did wanna get the cost.
Okay, so it was 500?
I made the motion and Chase seconded it.
46?
46.
All right, so that's fine. All right, so the number's $15,000.
Okay, cause my first hold I have is 47.
Okay, so on 47, there was a series of questions.
Wait a minute, what happens to 46?
46, we, we didn't vote whether we supported or not.
So we're not gonna take a stand on supporting it or not?
Well, if somebody would like to make a motion to support it...
Um, this goes, I'll make, I'll make a motion to support, um, Article 46, as written.
Okay, I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay, three to two, same as the original. Okay. Okay, 47.
Okay, in Article 47, there was a series of questions regarding the value of the home and how affordability is determined. So behind the, the warrants, there's a series of documents. One from the assessor, from Ann Murphy. And she basically outlined that there's a formula that's based upon the deed and the sale price and so forth and so on. So she couldn't pin it down to a specific value for this structure. But what she did is she looked at other similar situations and came up with a value, and it's on the second property card, of $270,000 a year. And the taxes would be about $5,100. She's also saying, once all the information's in from the purchase and sale, that number would go down considerably, her expectation.
Okay, so this is quite a bit lower than the cost of that?
Yes.
That was one of our questions.
Right.
Was it gonna get assessed at 400,000 plus? And it doesn't appear that it's going to, which is good.
Right.
Um, I, I had one question.
How do they determine the value of the property? That's...
Well, and that's in the, there's a formula for these types of properties that the assessors have. And if you read Ann's memo, it talks about some of those factors that she would need after the sale of the home and the deeds recorded, to be able to come up with a value of a home that has an affordable housing restriction on it.
I have a question.
Okay.
The formula, sale price, was, is this just a typo, um, coming from the Habitat for Humanity Executive Director? Cause she indicates that the sale price for the home is set no more than 30% of the homeowner's income. That can't be right, right? Cause the homeowner's income is 60,000, it's not set at 18,000.
I think it's, it's, the sale price is set so the payment is no more than 30% of the homeowner's...
Okay, she really worded, I thought it was gonna be 300%, so...
No, no, no.
So it's, so again, how should that have been?
It's the, and this is what we talked about last time, this is what was in the RFP response.
Yep.
That the, the price of the home is set so the payment is no more than 30%.
The mortgage payment, so she really misstated it. It's the mortgage, well, no, the sale price for the home is set at no more than 30% of the homeowner's income. It's not the sale price, it's the mortgage payment that is set at no more than 30%, if I'm understanding you correctly.
Well, that's based upon the sale price.
Right, but this sentence is just wrong.
Well, I understand, wait a minute, I mean, let me explain. She's communicating with Jean, and they speak the same language. So everybody knew what she meant, and everybody knew what we were talking about.
Okay, but it's not, again, it's not the sale price, it's the mortgage payment, correct?
Well, the mortgage payment is based upon the sale price.
I know, Jeff, but there's no, I mean...
And taxes as well.
Right, but I mean, it, that's, that's no really different than any advice they give to anybody on the amount that you should pay for your rent or your mortgage based on your income. It's nothing to do with it being special language, given the fact that it's affordable housing. That's kind of Finance 101. They say 30% of anybody's monthly income. So again, it is the mortgage amount. It's the monthly mortgage amount.
Yes.
Okay, so that answers that. And based on what's coming from the Habitat, um, it's still not clear to me. I'm, I'm on board now because it's only gonna get assessed in the low 300s. But I still don't know how she arrives at the sale price of the home. Cause she says the dollar amount is 403.5, which is the budgeted project development cost, not the sale price of the home. Great. And then we go back to the sale price for the home is set at no more. I guess I would like to know, is it the mortgage? I want her to correct that. Like, what exactly is the sale price going to be based upon? And if it's a formula, hold on. If it's a formula, we're all pretty educated, I'll understand what the formula is. But if it's a formula, tell us what the formula is. And I promise you, the Finance Committee would have the same question. I mean, it's not 30% of the sale price. We know that, cause that's nonsense. So if it is a formula, I just wanna know what the formula is.
Well, on page two of that document...
Okay.
Which I didn't get a chance to go over. It talks about how they come up with the affordability factors. And they set the price of the home based upon who they select to get the home and their income. So the price is not a definitive price. It could change based upon who's selected to be in the home.
Okay, so let's just throw a number out there, okay? Let's say the annual income is 75,000.
Okay.
What would be the sale price of the home?
I have no idea.
Okay, that's, that's basically what we, but that's basically the information that we were requesting.
No, you requested an estimated value in what the AMI was.
And how the sale price would be arrived at.
Well, she, they also say the, the, um, the price is not typically set until the homeowner has been selected.
Right, because they wanna know what their annual income is. But she should be able to answer just a hypothetical, like, for example, cause they're gonna apply a formula. So if the family is earning 75,000, what would you set the price at? If the family is earning 60,000, what's the formula? They use a formula based on annual salary.
It's no more than 30%.
But that's high.
Of your monthly income.
Even for 30...
It's a 30% number.
But if somebody may...
Okay, so the sale price for the home is set at no more than 30% of the homeowner's monthly income? The mortgage payment?
Mortgage payment is set.
Not the sale price. Yeah, Chase, I know you've been...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't wanna lose it. I had, I just had a question about the assessed value of the house. So she's assuming that it's gonna be assessed in the low 300s, but it's gonna...
No, 270.
270, but it's gonna cost over 400 to build.
Well, 60 for the land, so it is the low 300. So land was assessed at 60.
Right, but, but the four, the 400 that looking didn't include the land. So it'd be really be at 460.
I think you need to take everything you know about taxes and land and sale price and throw it out the window.
With this.
Because Habitat doesn't make a profit. Habitat gets money from different sources, and they price a home, along with the land, to a homeowner who can afford it.
Okay.
And they set a price accordingly.
For that person.
But the assessed value, at least with respect to the land...
Is less.
Looks like it is typical of what land would cost. I mean, I know the building was assessed at less, less than the development cost. But the land was assessed by Ann at 63,000. That wasn't adjusted, the value of the land.
All of this will be adjusted once the homeowner owns the home and all the...
But it looks like Ian already made an adjustment on the 207. That's already, right, that's already less than the cost of the building. Right, but the land doesn't look like she made any adjustment. She already, she already made an adjustment coming up with the 270 because as we pointed out, it was like four something, not counting the land. So she already made some kind of adjustment.
I think she came up with an estimate on a typical home, similar value, just to give you an idea what the taxes may be.
Okay, and then what about the 63,000 is actually that particular land, though?
Okay.
I, no, I'm, I guess it's a little bit of a question.
I'm looking at the second property card.
Me, too.
And it's got the taxes up in the corner.
Yeah.
51, 52? Yeah, so that's what she's anticipating, a home with a value of $270,000, the taxes would be. But she's also saying, once all the information is known, the assessed value will probably go down somewhat.
But just, just for the record, the explanation we got from Jeanne, I didn't find helpful.
Well, I didn't get a chance to really go over it. I understand what it says.
Well, no, you kept saying that that sentence was correct, and I mean, and it wasn't. It's the mortgage payment, so I don't wanna keep going over that, but we, we, she didn't end up telling us the formula, but that's fine. I'm, I'm pleased that we're in the low 300s because I think then it's a much more realistic in terms of affording the taxes rather than 460.
It's not gonna be in the 300s at all. It's 270. That's the estimate we got.
Well, and what about the 60 for the land?
It's, it's 63, 100 plus 207, 80 for $270,000. It's up in the upper right-hand corner of the property card.
And that fits within 60% of the AMI.
Well, that's what they say. I'm, I'm fine, I'm going to support it at this point.
Can I, can I ask the board a few questions? Because this is my first run with this. What are the benefits to the town having this property? I guess is what I'm getting, cause I'm...
Well, we're required to have, by state law, go ahead.
State law requires communities to have 10%.
10%, and we're below the 10%.
Well below.
Okay, so we're in a situation where we...
We needed to, and that's one of the reasons we are also supported, or at least didn't object to the development on 131, which was also going to be some affordable housing, because we're below what we're required to.
If ever.
Yeah.
If ever.
If... Right.
If ever.
I mean, one house isn't going to do it, you know?
Yeah, we'd have to do 120 houses in order to get up to 10%.
I mean, that's why we need like an apartment.
It's too bad that the state, the way it's written, it's too bad that the mobile community, the retirement community doesn't count. Because when they went for that grant, remember, they were like 89% below income?
Low, yeah.
Below low income. They would fill those numbers. There was a push to try it.
Send it to Brewer.
And try smaller than that.
That doesn't count because the land...
And it didn't fly.
It's valued at over $1 million because of the land, as opposed to what their income level, because they are below...
89% was below income.
It's the biggest, really.
I mean, if that was allowable, we'd have no...
We would be beyond the 10%.
Right.
It gets really complicated, too, because federal subsidies don't apply to properties that are, you know, not on a fixed foundation.
That's why also a lot of these Chapter 40B developments go into towns, because they don't have their 10% quota.
Mm-hmm.
Is that the only question?
That's the only question, yeah, yeah, thank you.
And just from my own sense, if Ian could take that sentence and explain it a little better for me.
Which one?
The sale price for the home is set at no more than 30% of the homeowner's income.
What would you like it to say?
I'd like it to read accurate... Well, we know that the sale price is not set at 30%. Because the sale... 30% of the homeowner's income is nonsense. Like, if somebody makes $60,000 a year, the sale price is not set at, you know, 60, 30% of that or $18,000. So...
I'll ask Debbie Marocca-Ho.
To explain herself on that.
To rephrase that sentence.
If it's the monthly mortgage payment, then say that.
Yeah.
That's all. I mean, it's very simple.
The mon... Yeah. Or the... Yeah. The annual...
Okay.
Cost.
And what is the formula, I guess? I read the second 30 to 60%, but...
The formula for what?
Enough said.
For the setting that price of the home?
Correct.
Well, you're going to pick... You're going to pick a homeowner. You're going to look at their income. You're going to see what 30%, what they can afford on a monthly mortgage, and you're going to set the home price accordingly.
So it's what I said at the very beginning, the monthly mortgage amount?
Yes, it's always been the monthly mortgage.
Well, then, you know what? Let's have her say that so that we have the proper record of it. You know? She can explain it correctly. If it's a monthly mortgage amount, if it's not the sale price of the home, period.
If it's just a matter of fixing up a sentence.
Yeah, we'll get a new sentence.
Okay, then. Is there a motion on Article 47? Need some sort of motion. Place, not place, place and support.
I'm going to make a motion to place it. Somebody... I'm not saying I'm not going to support it, but I guess I just want my... I want to think about it a little more, and I want her to explain to us.
I'll second that. These have to be published next Monday. That's okay. We can just place it. We don't have to support it then.
Yeah, we've even made a motion at the...
At the meeting.
And if other people want to support it right now, they're free to have another motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any more discussion on that? To place? All those in favor? All those opposed? Four to one. Okay. Okay.
The Storm window project, Article 48, was completed. Article 49, conveyance of town-owned land at 8 Brookfield Road. There was a question regarding the leasing and whether or not the article is written would account for leasing. There is a one-page email from Attorney Eichman that says that the... In general, that the town Board of Selectmen may lease a town building for a term of up to 30 years without town meeting authorization. However, if you lease land, you need town meeting authorization, and either one can be leased up to 30 years. The article as written allows for the conveyance of an interest in the property, which could mean a direct sale or a lease. So the article would allow the Board of Selectmen at a future date, if passed, to either lease the land or sell the land.
Can I ask a question? If it's leased, and they want to occupy it, is it not... If we're the landlord, is it not our responsibility to bring that up to code?
Depends on how you structure the lease. You can make a triple net where all improvements are the responsibility of the tenant.
Even if it has asbestos?
Absolutely. It depends on how you make... Come to an arrangement with the tenant. Now, if I'm a tenant, I'm not agreeing to that.
No kidding.
But it really comes down to a willing landlord and a willing tenant.
And I think it's a pain in the neck for the town after anything that comes up, because that building is not in shape.
Oh, I don't disagree at all.
You know, and I just as soon see it to the ground personally.
And that's why it would become the landlord's lease.
Hope it doesn't get down, or we know who to go after. I don't think it stays forever, but...
There is an issue that Town Council brings up, and I think the town acquired the land from Cartier, who was our first fire chief, and it may have been granted for the purpose of a fire station.
Didn't you lease it to somebody else already?
Yeah, it was leased already.
Yeah, but...
Leased to a DIA studio.
But to... Yeah, it was leased, but...
But that would be in the... Are you saying it in the deed?
But if we want to sell the property, if there's a restriction...
All right, we'll check the deed.
Okay, check the... Check to see if there was a restriction on it, because the council does point out that if there was a restriction on the deed, there may be an issue.
I would personally venture to say that there isn't one. I mean, I think you should check. And the reason is that there was a study done on it. And that study would have raised that point, and it didn't.
No, I mean, I know that there's... Well, it's a different piece of property, but the nursery school is given to the town. Being a nursery school, we already looked into that, but I don't think there's a restriction on the fire. But it's worth looking at.
I mean...
So we put a hold on Article 49? Or did we place it?
No, you put a hold.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to place and support Article 49.
Okay, hang on a second. Which is to sell it?
Yeah, allows us to...
Sell it.
Sell it.
Or lease it.
Or lease it, but convey it. We already cleared that up.
You said place and support?
Yep.
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, Priscilla, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Four, all opposed. One, four to one. Okay, and then Article 50.
Article 50, there's a hold waiting on the appraisal.
Right.
Yep. Article 51 was completed. Article 52 was completed. Article 53 was completed. Article 54, the board requested a more expansive summary on what's actually going on, and there's a new paragraph there under staff summary. And you also asked the minimum lot size. The minimum lot size in that zone will be one acre.
That's what we thought.
But that was, I think, voted on.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, it was only those three.
Article 55 is completed. Article 56, we're putting $100,000 in for the additional funds. That's an estimate. And we put the accountant number in. That was... Article 57 was completed. Article 58 was completed. All spelling and grammatical errors were corrected.
Okay. I'm just putting this up to the board. We don't want in the staff summary to indicate that the minimum lot size remains at one acre.
We can put it in if you...
I don't know. I don't...
Usually the FinCom sticks in the boxes.
They'll say what they want. It's just that we made a point of saying nobody met the 50-acre lot size or the 25-acre. If we have... It's their summary box, so they'll do what they want. But I think the question will arise that it's a one-acre lot size, so place it.
I will add a piece, so when I transmit to the... A new copy to FinCom tomorrow, it'll be there.
Okay, Priscilla? On Article 56, it says, "The board voted to place the item, waiting for a cost." Now we have a cost, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so do we... So it needs a vote of some kind, right?
Yeah.
Who voted on that motion?
56?
Yeah.
It was...
Me and... It was Chase and I.
Yes, and then...
Chase. Okay, do you want to amend your motion?
I'll make my... I'll make the motion to place and support Article 56.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, Penny, are you here on any of the articles before we...
I just wanted to go a specific area of the national, and you can get a update on the Holland Road, and I feel that we need us to discuss a whole lot of...
We don't have the appraisal yet.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Penny. Yes, you too. Grandma? Okay. Is there a motion then to close the warrant for the special town meeting?
So the Holland Road article is being pulled, is that it?
No, it's still awaiting the appraisal.
Okay.
I mean, we can vote on that that night.
That night.
Still here.
So I'm...
By closing it, we're not taking any more articles.
Okay, so it's still...
Still there on paper.
Still alive.
Still alive, okay.
So Priscilla, did you make a motion to close the warrant? Is there a second?
Second.
I can hear. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, five to nothing. Old business, and I mentioned the town administrator's goals. New business? Oh, any other old business? Priscilla? No. Chase? Mike?
No.
Mary?
No.
Okay, new? Priscilla?
No.
Chase? Mike?
No.
Mary?
No.
I have none, so... Okay, correspondence. Mike?
What page was that on?
Begins on 255.
Find it. Okay.
And it usually begins with charter.
Okay, of course, it begins with charter. Okay, Charter Communications, we received a letter dated December 10th, changing the Channel Vice Land to just Vice. We... On December 9th, we received a letter from the Department of Environmental Protection, Central Regional Office, regarding the landfill closure at... In Southbridge. And that goes on for several pages. And for the landfill closure, there was an attachment of the state form for the closure of the project. And on... Okay, I don't have the date on the Hill correspondence here. Maybe it's the page before? No. Anyhow, we have correspondence from Hill, Sturbridge, Inc., regarding a notice for outreach meeting that will be held on January 7th at 660 Main Street, 6:00 p.m. Then on... Also, on January 19th, we received a letter from Schuschlinger and Bochbinder about a petition... Oh, the... That's part of the petition for Hill, Inc., which included a traffic study for the site at 660 Main Street. And then on... Also, on December 19th, we received the report of the nominating committee for the Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Agency. And there were two new nominees. One is Ellen Allen, Selectman from Norwell, and the other one is... What's his name? Bill Keegan from Foxborough, the town manager in Foxborough. And...
Yeah, there was a request if we had anybody else we wanted to nominate.
Yeah, we could nominate someone else. Our voting delegate at the MMA Conference and Trade Show for the MIA meeting that happens there is our chairman. So Chairman Blanchard will be voting on that. And that's the correspondence for this meeting.
Okay, thank you. Samantha, can you fill out the consent to stand for...
What paper you want on?
Please?
What name do you want on?
Oh, it's the chairman of the board.
Yeah, last meeting, we voted for the chair to be the representative to that... Was it on the 25th of January?
Saturday.
Saturday.
If I can just read this just... It was very easy when I was the clerk. We used to just have a correspondence sheet where you've just listed the...
Yeah, right.
You know, listed the letter, who it was from and the date, letter, who it's from and date, and then he can just read that down.
It's a lot easier.
Yeah. I mean, if you look at old...
It would even be quicker.
If you look at old packets, it'll be...
I'll bring that to Andrea. She'll be taking over on Monday.
Oh, she's coming back Monday? Oh, okay.
Wow.
That's good to know.
All right. All right, well, you've done a great job in the interim.
Yes.
You really had to just jump right in, and we appreciate it.
Trial by fire.
What you did, thank you.
I didn't realize she was coming back that soon. I feel like...
Well, baby's like, what, three months old?
I know, I feel...
Went fast.
Like it went very quickly, yeah.
It does. Okay, next on the agenda, we have approval of minutes of December 16th.
I've got a few. On the first page of the minutes, on page 299, the time that we started to vote on executive session was 6:00 p.m. or something like that. I think we should indicate the time we started. And then when we... After we came out between when we voted and where it says Chair Blanchard called the and where it says Chair Blanchard called the meeting to order, we should have something that says open session, so it's clear that we're back in open session at that time. So just a time.
So it's time of executive session?
What time, just six P M. executive session, and then after the executive session stuff there, just put open session, so it, it, just so it's clear that, that we're no longer in, you know, executive session, or that we're acting in open session. Or, and the next one is on page three oh three. It's under accept the purchase and sale agreement for five oh one Main Street. Second sentence in there says, "Selectment supernot." One, one thing I did was I asked whether the, the RFP for the purchase of the land was advertised in the central register. I remember saying that. And I also said something about, that I thought we were going to do, we would vote after the special town meeting to accept the agreement, but that was explained that we didn't have to wait, so.
And it was published, the RFP was published.
Was published in the central register.
Back in August, yeah.
Okay, you want me to put that in there?
Yeah, I, I did ask, and I didn't, I hadn't seen it in the central register. I usually look for Sturbridge stuff.
Anything else, Mike?
Mm, on page three oh four, the fourth sentence, uh, fourth paragraph from the bottom, where it says, "Selectment supernot asked if the town could use the community impact fee to reimburse the town for costs." It says for repair, and I think I was a little bit more specific. I, I asked about road improvements and repairs. Also, when you, when we're talking about the town of Sturbridge in particular, I think it should be capitalized. The T in town. If it's about any other, any town, then it doesn't have to be capitalized, but if we're referring to our town, we would. Page three oh five. I just had a question on whether we, it says here, "The board said they were more interested in money and requested the applicant freeze or close services." I think it was just the opposite. The town wasn't more interested in money. We were interested in being able to maybe stop, or if, if there was a violation, to have penalties that would be, you know, a day.
Before you keep going, which line is...
Yeah, that's what I was just going to ask, where we...
This is, this is, the paragraph above, review the proposed warrant articles for January twenty-seventh. That paragraph just before it, and it says...
Ah, got it.
Yeah, in the middle of that paragraph, it says, "The board said they were more interested in money and, and requested the applicant's freeze or close services." So I think the, from my recollection is, is the board was more interested in being able to close services than in getting money.
No, it was supposed to say less interested, definitely.
So it's just the, the opposite idea. And I believe that's it.
Anyone else? Mary?
I have a few changes. On page three oh four, the third full paragraph, Vice Chair Dowling said that she realizes that it is legal for Hill Inc. to convert. After the word convert, put, "To adult-use marijuana under the mass statute." Adult-use marijuana under the mass statute, period. And then I would, then, "There are no prohibiting words or guarantees in the host agreement. That conversion cannot happen." Okay, and then she would want to see language from Hill Inc. relinquish, she would want to see language from Hill Inc. "Which would relinquish any statutory right to convert in the future contractually, add, in the event that Hill Sturbridge is given an adult-use license." Okay, so it has to read, "She would want to see language from Hill, insert before relinquish, which would relinquish any statutory right to convert in the future, contractually." I don't even think you need the word contractually, just statutory right to convert in the future in the event that Hill Sturbridge is given an adult-use license. Okay, and then the next paragraph, the sentence halfway down, "Vice Chair Dowling was opposed to providing two licenses to Hill Inc. and Hill Sturbridge Inc." Insert, "Attorney Costanzo assured the board that Hill is only interested in one adult-use license." Attorney Costanzo assured the board that Hill is only interested in one adult-use license.
Okay. Okay, anyone, anything else? Okay, a motion to approve is amended then? So move?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, no.
This was one of our longer meetings, so, and the, the minutes were difficult, so I thought it was a good job.
He said, she said. Someday we'll just get to where this
She said.
Motion made?
Yeah.
Seconded.
Seconded, vote.
Motion made, seconded, vote. Okay. Priscilla, a motion, who's heard?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? You were right, Jeff. It wasn't longer.